All right, we recall the order to work session in Coffee County Board of Education, March 23rd, 2023. I ask Mr. Mobley to read the caption, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pray.
Good Lord, thank you for loving us, thank you for blessing us, Lord, and thank you for being here with us tonight. Lord, we're very thankful for this board and the work they do for our community and for our children, Lord. And I just pray that tonight, as we recognize them, that they feel hopefully appreciated and respected, Lord. And I just pray that the business that we conduct tonight is pleasing to your sight. Pray for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions, Lord. I just thank you in advance for all the blessings that you pour out on our school district, and I pray. Amen.
Amen. Everybody look at the agenda. There'll be a motion to adopt it. Senator Blackwell, Mr. Ross, all five. All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Welcome, and we've got a big agenda tonight, and we'll go ahead and get started on that. And give me one minute to pull this up. But I would report out that we've had a good couple of weeks in the school system, and everybody's focused on achievement and student achievement and raising achievement within the district. And so we're really excited tonight to have our principal from Coffee Middle School here with us, Mr. Randy Drew. And Mr. Drew, if you want to go ahead and begin your update to the board on the happenings at Coffee Middle School.
Yes, sir. Getting board members, Dr. Lees, I'd like to present our update for Coffee Middle School. Just to kind of give you a brief rundown, and I promise I'll make this as brief as possible. I know y'all got a lot of work to do tonight. Enrollment data currently for this school term, it's broken down by male, female, total enrollment. We've got 556 students in the sixth grade, 508 in seventh, 582 in eighth, and a total enrollment of 1,646 students at Coffee Middle School. 175 total staff members, so it is a large school, and so far we are running efficiently and ready to roll into spring break and get ready for testing. To give an update on some literacy and ELA initiatives, obviously the data shows a big breakdown statewide. COVID has a lot to do with that, with the gap specifically in literacy and ELA. Some of the things that we did incorporate this school term, we got Dr. Kevin Rosensky with writing 360 framework to come down and train our ELA teachers and incorporating some writing skills within the content and their lesson plans. Kind of the way we wanted to budget that, it was a significant amount that we did with our funding, but we wanted to see if it was going to be a positive. We want to see if we had gains in sixth grade and if we want to incorporate it school-wide in seventh and eighth grade next year. So we're going to take that data after milestones and see if it had an overarching achievement for that. Another initiative that we looked at with L4 money, with that grant that provided an opportunity to target with the hiring of two interventionists through contract services that are retired and outside the system that come in. Those ladies are certified to help give instruction for our middle-of-the-road kids. Those are the kids that I look at that score twos or threes on milestone. We have an after-school program for our lower achieving and also give the programs for our higher. So a lot of the middle-of-the-road kids kind of get often overlooked, and we wanted to make sure that those kids weren't overlooked and targeted that are there with that program. One of the events that we had at the beginning of the school year, we had Adrian Peterson, outstanding running back and person in general, come into a school-wide assembly in conjunction with United Way. And he charged his students motivation, talking about barriers and not to allow those to become excuses and to proceed through that. So that was one of the positive things. He got to meet with every grade level in separate assemblies and hopefully push those kids to better succeed in life. One of the other things, I had a couple pictures of different things and activities we've done throughout the school year. But we talked about innovation and events. We've had PTO events, stress days. You can kind of see some of those pictures, and if you'd like to visit our Facebook. But one of the things, we had a charter school system video where they came down and did a shoot with us. This is a short one-and-a-half-minute video to really show the innovation of FFA barn that was built a few years ago.
Exams of innovation at this campus. Come on, I'm going to show you one in particular called the ag barn. We're here at the ag barn where we come for ag classes and FFA meetings. Here we also have cows, goats, and hogs. We learn how to take care of them, show them, showmanship. We learn how to be responsible and take care of many different species and learn all about agriculture. So agriculture is Georgia's number-one industry, and a lot of people don't realize that. And our goal with teaching students through agriculture is to make sure that they can make that connection between where their food and fibers actually come from, beyond just the grocery store. So when we get to bring kids out to a barn, we get to show them firsthand and hands-on what it is that we actually do in our industry. And through livestock showing, students have the opportunity not only to get that firsthand experience with different animals, but they also get to develop those professional skills, soft skills like communication, time management, things like that, where they have this animal that's dependent on them. Especially at the middle school age, they're maybe not used to that kind of responsibility. So it teaches them a lot about having to manage themselves and something else and learning those skills that any profession is going to look for in an individual.
We have this incredible barn, and it's so big, and so many people can come in here and show many different animals that might not have it at their own home. Like, I don't have a barn or space for a barn right now, and so I can just bring my cows up here and any other animals that somebody else might have, they can have the opportunity to show with this ag barn.
And that's innovation, Coffee County style.
So that was our short video we did with the innovation with the ag barn at the beginning, towards the beginning of the school year. And it got a chance to highlight that, and that'll be sent. Dr. Lees received a copy of that, and that'll be coming out through the charter school system, kind of that way.
Welcome to Coffee Middle School. There's smoking.
The next thing that we got are our sports programs. I just wanted to highlight them and give them some love. Scroll back one page. This gives you a chance to look at all the kids that participate. It is a large number of students, and I think that that plays a major role in these kids' lives. We've had a lot of success this year. To kind of give you an idea, if you'll go to the next slide, we've had Big Five conference championships with boys soccer. And I kind of want to show them some love. They went 13-0 this year, first time in school history of not losing a game and winning the conference championship. That was one of the things that was outstanding. Coach Juan Avalos does a great job, and I just want to show them some love. Coffee Middle School girls tennis were the Big Five conference champions this year, as well as the boys being tennis runners-up for the Big Five. I also wanted to highlight girls softball won the conference championship back in the fall. And boys baseball came up a little bit short in the tournament, but they were regular season champs this past spring. So that's a highlight on our sports conference champions. The last part was to highlight our clubs and our connections. This is a video that we put together for y'all as well as conjunction with our transition. It's about five, six minutes. It highlights different parts of what kids get to do back when we call exploratories. They're called connections. And we try to align those with the academies to give these kids an idea of what they want to do, what they want to go into and do as a job field.
Oh, the clock is tick-tocking, and you'll be rolling right into sixth grade.
Shh, this is the library.
I'm here with Ms. Cassie Chris. And what do you do in this class?
Well, in this class, we learn music. We get to sing. We get to perform and have lots of fun. And we perform for all of our family and friends twice a year.
This is the PBL room. This is where they're working on their projects right now. I'm here with Vanessa Teal.
And Jessica.
And what are y'all working on right now?
A CMA awards project.
I'm here with Ms. Ashley Harden. And what do you do in this class?
I teach business and computer science, and we do a lot with business concepts such as entrepreneurship, personal financial literacy. We also go over governance, patent, all sorts of things related to wanting to start a business, grow a business, and also how to be good with budgets and finances also.
Do you have any clubs that you run?
I do. I actually am the advisor for FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America. Goes in line with everything that we teach here in this class. Anything from digital citizenship, personal financial literacy, business concepts, marketing, all of that. We cover in FBLA. We have a ton of fun, take a lot of field trips, compete in lots of different types of competitive events, and also work on our leadership skills.
Thank you.
I'm here with.
Emily Rogers.
I'm here with.
Terry Kenny.
And why did you decide to become a band teacher?
Because when I started in the seventh grade, I had so much fun, I decided I would like to do this.
Thank you.
Welcome to engineering. I'm Shoe, and I'm here with.
Mr. Wilder.
And what do you teach?
I teach technology and engineering.
What made you become a teacher at CMS?
I fell into this engineering class that I have, and I really love it, hands-on, and maybe teach something for the outside world in your job place.
I'm Andy Kate, and I'm here with.
Laura Jay.
And what are you doing right now?
We're building a marble maze, and it has to last at least one minute.
Welcome to Tools for College Success.
I'm here with.
Rachel Griffiths.
And what do you do in this class?
In Tools for College Success, we do a couple of things related to learning some new vocabulary that will prepare students to prepare for the SAT. So we learn some SAT-level words. We do some projects that involve using technology, and we also do some career searches as well.
I'm here with.
Ms. Whitley.
And what class do you teach?
I teach college and career readiness.
And do you have any clubs?
I sponsor TSA, which is the Technology Student Association.
Thank you. I'm here with.
Haley Randleman.
And what class do you teach?
I teach art here at Coffee Middle School, grades six through eight.
And what clubs do you sponsor?
I sponsor the art club here currently. We meet once a month and do various activities. All are welcome to join, and we just meet up, like I said, once a month, about the second Tuesday of each month, and just host different activities for the students.
Senora Clyde.
And what do you teach in this class?
I teach Spanish to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And it's a way for them to prepare so that whenever they go to the high school, they have already a background in the language.
Ela es la mujer, profesora.
My name is Kaiden, and I'm here with.
Faith Spencer.
What do you do in this class?
I am the Family Consumer Science teacher for sixth through eighth grade.
Do you have any clubs?
FCC LA.
What do you do in that club?
We do the last things we do once a month, which is the last one state of each month. So we talk about the different regional, state conventions that they can go to. And we have one upcoming trip that the girls are super excited about, and that's the summer trip that will be taken up to Atlanta, and they'll get a chance to stay in cabins for a whole week.
Okay. I'm here with.
Mrs. Williams.
And what do you do in this class?
I teach agriculture, so we learn about everything related to our food, fibers, and natural resources, the plants and animals and the things that we use every day and how that we get them.
And do you run any clubs?
I run one of our FFA clubs, and one of the advisors, where we get to compete in those things related to agriculture. And FFA is one of the largest student-led organizations in the country.
Thank you. This is the main connection hallway where most of the connections are. Welcome to P. Okay, and I'm in the Coffee Middle School gym with.
Coach Stan Hughes.
And what are y'all doing here?
Well, in physical education, or PE, what we do as teachers, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders all day long. We do exercises and agilities. Occasionally, we go out on the track and run mile Monday, of course. We try to get you guys in shape. But if we work real hard all week long, on Fridays, we have a surprise, and sometimes we get some free time, let you guys do some other stuff.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the boys weight room. I'm here with.
Coach Moore.
And what do you do here at CMS?
I run the boys weight room for all athletics.
Okay. I'm here with.
I'm Shoe.
What do you do in this class?
This is a girls' weights class for, we go for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for all female athletes.
I'm here with.
Emma.
Jocelyn.
Heidi. And what were y'all just doing?
Our net line.
It's mile Monday.
It's mile Monday, and I got W reds.
I'm on the CMS track with.
Holly.
And Josie.
What are y'all doing today?
It's mile Monday. And we have to run four laps to have a track.
All of us back inside.
What's y'all's favorite part of the day?
Education.
Welcome to the library. This is a course where you can read books, and there's a library science class in here. Hey, Ms. Harper. I'm here with.
Nicole Harper.
And what do you do in this class?
Library science is where we produce the news and the yearbook, and you have to try out in sixth grade for the seventh grade year or in seventh grade for the eighth grade year.
Thank you. Shoevee. Special thanks to my seventh-grade media team, Casey, Andy Kate, Shoe, and KK.
All right, the video that's just being shown is one of the things that helps kids when they're coming from fifth to sixth, that they get to see that they're sent out to all elementary schools, that they kind of get an idea as they're transitioning on campus to see what there is to offer. I think that's a big thing when they come in. The same thing with my eighth grader going to high school or ninth grade academy to see what's out there and what opportunities that they provide. But I just wanted to give you an overview of what's out there, what all our kids in Coffee County that go to the middle school get to offer. So I appreciate the time, Dr. Lees and board members, for giving me to give you all this update.
Good job, Randy. Thank you. All right, thank you, Randy. Appreciate you. All right, next on our agenda, we have the minutes from last month's meetings. Board members, if you want to take a moment to review those. We have a February work session and regular February meeting. If there's no questions or changes we need to make, we'll place those on the consent agenda for approval at our regular meeting. Financial report. And Ms. Young couldn't be with us tonight, and so I'll present the financials. You'll see on our first document there, we show an end-of-month fund equity of $31,696,072.92. The next document. We have the monthly fund equity comparison report. You'll see we went down slightly from January to February. Very similar to last year. And then the third document that we have is the detailed report. Any questions about that? And then the last document that we have is our sploß report. And you'll see that we collected $721,456.87 in February. The sploß looks beautiful. It does. Any questions about that? I did notice we're local city county sploß passed earlier this week. All right. There's no questions about the financial reports, then we will move on to the bids, proposals, and/or quotes. Then we have the record management software server. And this is to serve our police chief and his department. We have a recommendation to approve the purchase of this software from Eagle Advantage Solutions for $26,524. And we will use ESER III, American Recovery Act funding for that. And that has been approved by the State Department of Education. The next item that we have is a migrant tutoring program. Yes, sir. If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda, the previous records management software service. Then we've got the virtual instruction for migrants. And that is ad minum for $29,000. What does that entail? It's a computer-based tutorial-type program in which the students can work on academics, math, science, social studies. I mean, it's purpose, or what are we probably saying, they're not going to be in the school system anymore? Dr. Tucker, can you answer that?
It's additional summer support, so in an effort to prevent a summer slide for the those students.
So if kids are in our school system, but they can work on stuff in the summertime, okay.
Yes.
All right, and the second piece under that is the migrant tutoring program details, tutored by teachers, and that's. You see several quotes there. And that just reflects the ad minum price. So we did shop that to try to get various prices. It's just a yearly thing, it's used every year. Yes, sir. That's what we. Annual subscription. Using ESER funding, again.
Title 1C.
Title 1C, so it is. We'll be able to track this to see if it's hit it.
Hope so. That's initially the reason for using it with this select group of students, so we'll have a group of students to compare it to their performance to other students.
All right. And then the next item that we have is the Chromebook purchase. We have a request here using ESER funding. 320 Chromebooks. And the price on that is $89,840. And this will be purchased using ESER funds. And we'll bind that off the state contract price.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And then we have Sattila furniture. We're going to replace desks, chairs, and horseshoe tables for each K5 classroom. And this is being purchased off the state contract list. And the total amount And once again, this was approved by the State Department of Education. It was in our ESER application, and they've approved this purchase. The next item is science tables and chairs at Coffee High School. Requesting the purchase with ESER III. And once again, this has been approved by the State Department. And that tows $15,691.22. It's just the chairs. All right. Is that just the chairs? Tables in the second page there. All right. And the tables are $50,647.68. And then Coffee High School student chairs. All of this funded the same way? Yes, sir, using the ESER money. And this is the pandemic relief money. Honestly, the pandemic was terrible and just a tragedy all over the world. But in some ways, our school system is funding, has helped us improve our system. We have a lot of needs that are being met that we wouldn't have had if we wouldn't have had this pandemic funding. So I do want to credit our staff, Mr. Mobley, especially Dr. Tucker. She's done a tremendous job with budgeting and requests. And from the very start, when we realized this pandemic funding was coming, the entire staff came together and looked at what our needs were, and we've addressed many of our needs as a district using this funding. So we're going to be in a really good place for the next 10, 15 years with some of these needs, things we would not have been able to replace or would have had to use local funds. So that's the bids, proposals, and/or quotes. Any questions about that? If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Number eight on the agenda, we have the school calendar, the 2023-24 calendar. And the majority, or the most, I'm going to say the majority. I don't think it was the majority, was it, Dr. Tucker?
Most.
Yeah, yeah, the highest number of.
Right, yes, sir.
Yeah, the highest number of.
Right, that's right, next top, right.
Just had more votes than others, well, that's fairly majority. Yes, sir. So this was the most popular one, about that. Who are you talking to here? We did have one of the principals say that his staff really liked to have one day a month off, and low and behold, that's the one that most of the staff chose, so. But we're still starting in August, and we don't bring back staff in July. So the students won't start until the ninth. So it's a good calendar. And then the 2023-24 handbook. We just wanted to open up conversations tonight with the board. If there's any concerns, we'll come back next month and discuss the handbook some more. Board members, y'all be thinking about it. If there's anything that's been burning in your mind that we need to address in the handbook, we can certainly look into that or go in and come back. Number 10 is GSBA information. That's the Georgia School Board Association. We have the delegate and alternate for the summer conference. We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate for the conference. Who we love here, Brian. All right, Mr. Lee Owen. Mr. Lee Owen. Did you note that, Robin?
Can Brian do it?
Being the past president.
And being on the board now? Are you on the board now?
Yes. I would think so. When they do that delegate assembly, they just bring everyone into the big conference room. But right now, let's put down Brian and Lee Owen. We'll investigate that. If there's a problem, I'll let the board know. Y'all can appoint somebody else. Y'all can appoint somebody else. I see, Mr. Lot. All right. So we've got two alternates. Leowen, then Adam. The GSBA exemplary board application. We are going to pursue the exemplary board application. And board members, we need your approval to submit the application for this. Are there any questions about the awards recognition program? All right. If there's no questions about any of that, if it pleases the board, we will enter an executive session to discuss personnel and the employment or disbar action or evaluation of employees, and also real estate.
Certainly, it's like, well, it's blocked today.
Work sessions are done.